For you.
Good morning, everybody. We just start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance of.
Midnight, I say to America, and into the republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice.
Welcome, everybody, to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting of April eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Um, we're gonna do something a little bit different for attendance. I'm just gonna go around the room and if you could just state your name and position, that'd be great.
There we are.
I'll start. I'll start with.
I'm Pat Conway, I'm the county attorney.
Robyn Bernier, IT manager.
Jude Gates, facilities director.
Leila Matello, Commissioner's office.
Kristen Vertanian, Deputy County Attorney.
Stephen Goddoo, Commissioner.
John Goodlander, Assistant County Attorney.
Brian Chirichello, Commissioner.
Kate Coyle, Commissioner.
Allison Kivakati, the Director of Human Resources.
Jason Smith, Director of Healthcare Services.
Jason Henry, Sub-Tan in Jail and Common Relief.
Thank you.
Good, we need some sometimes.
And TV star.
Joining us on Zoom, we have Major Bashaw and Randy Hill. Um, I don't see anybody else yet, so we may have people joining us as we. So let's start with our openings for door replacements.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Which has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion in motion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Goddoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Opening for water tower inspection?
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this one? If not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Goddoo?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, opening for recognized mobile data computers and mobile printers for the Sheriff's Office.
I move to authorize the High Sheriff to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none in the motion, Commissioner Goddoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Um, award for the EV charging station at Steel Shed.
I move to award the proposal for the EV charging station at Steel Shed to Gates Electrical Services Incorporated for an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Uh, just a little bit of information. This is part of the ARCA project. Our, the balance is exceeds what uh, this um, item is, so um, we have plenty in to support. And these are, I think, as we see increasingly more electric vehicles hitting the market, every day I see more on the road. I think it's a great thing that we're investing in this early using ARCA.
Further discussion? Uh, I'm just gonna add that um, I agree, this is part of the upper funds. Um, and what we did is we're trying to create um, more benefits for our employees, um, which is a plus, just to help to attract uh, into the county. So on the motion, uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Goddoo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We're not the percentage.
Um, I mean, we've got like a well-oiled machine. I move to approve the uh, April fourth, twenty twenty-four public meeting minutes and the April eleventh, twenty twenty-four non-public meeting minutes.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there uh, any additions, subtractions, corrections that anyone wants to make?
All good. Thank you very much.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Goddoo?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're going on to, so in our packets, we have adult medical daycare payout report for March twenty twenty-four. I don't know if anyone wants to sign in on that. You said our packets for review?
We're doing in good shape, I think.
We are. We're gonna be a little, as, as we stand now, we're gonna be just um, a few thousand dollars over budget. Um, we're slated at averaging around nine thousand um, dollars-ish, eight to nine thousand dollars a month with um, this was a payout through March, so April, May, June. So we have three months remaining and twenty-three thousand roughly um, water map remaining. So um, we're gonna have to get um, pull a little bit of, do you think we'll be able to, Jason, get some money, use some of the grant money to apply to?
I don't see why not.
Yeah. So just to cover that overage, um, and then, you know, we'll hopefully with that grant money, we'll be able to use some of that to expand services in the next budget year.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Further discussion?
No, looks good to me.
All right, perfect. Let's go to the constipatable list.
I move to approve the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four constipatable list total of three million one hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred and five dollars and twelve cents.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Uh, seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Goddoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, on to the points. Um, who wants to start? If they have anything, if the Commissioners have any information they want to share?
No, I have no report.
Commissioner Coyle?
Uh, you need to go, vacations are ongoing, though. I think we're uh, we're pretty close to the finish line, so um, that is uh, cautiously, we're cautiously optimistic here.
Uh, I just want to share that we have an employee that uh, needs recognition, or should get recognition, I should say. The dispatches for the Sheriff's Office, uh, Lauren, hope I said it right, Lauren Shealy uh, was named dispatcher of the year. So congratulations to her. Um, and that's all I have. So we're on to um, the Assistant County Attorney's staffing discussion.
Yeah, so I can start if that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, so I know you have um, Fran Harden ran along about this, so I, I asked my deputy of mine, my assistant, to come just to talk with you a little bit about their caseload and basically what a typical day is like in our office. Um, I also provided you with a letter with the numbers that everybody was asking for, so wanted to make sure we, we had a discussion about that. Um, I don't know if you've had a chance to read the letter that I provided to you all, and if you have any questions about it, I'm, I'm happy to answer them, but essentially, you know, what I'm really focusing in on is our caseload right now, and that it's, it's really more than double what the ideal number is. Um, and so I think cutting a position at this point would be um, really unfortunate and um, would drastically reduce um, the kind of services that we provide to victims of crime and to the citizens of this county. And so I'm hoping that you don't do it. Um, but with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to my deputy and to um, John as well.
Sure. Um, and I can start, John. What do you, and if you guys have any specific questions as we're talking, feel free to interrupt me, but um, I think, you know, I had an opportunity to look at the numbers of, just the pure numbers of our cases, which can be a little bit business leading. Um, some people are not just double, but they're triple, um, and getting into quadruple, either in two hundred, two hundred and fifty, um, which is pretty wild when you think about what a case involves sort of from beginning to end. And not every case is, is considered equal. Obviously, some cases require more work than others. Um, some of them are obviously very complex and others are more simple. So for some of the attorneys that handle the more simple cases, we expect their caseloads to be a little bit higher, and that's fine. Um, for me, for example, where I have, and I, I just, I guess to speak to me personally, because I can offer the most insight into that, um, where I have very complex cases that have um, tried a case last year with fifteen thousand pages of discovery and a couple hundred hours of interviews. Um, so I mean, the manpower that went into trying that case, that was a three-week-long trial, was absolutely um, like nothing I'd experienced in my career thus far. Um, it was a four-year investigation that was ongoing. Um, you know, the entire time, essentially, we were getting, get over three hundred exhibits at trial. And then I went into two back-to-back AFSA trials after that, um, that aggravated felony sexual assault, both child victims that were fully disclosure with thousands of pages of discovery. To be prepared for that kind of trial load is daunting to say the least, but to get ready for a normal trial, we're doing that a month out, um, where we're spending, you know, most of the week on reviewing the case, reviewing the discovery, um, thinking of legal issue, writing motions, getting ready to combat whatever we expect to happen at trial, and then getting our witnesses ready. And depending on our witnesses, that can be extremely lengthy. Most of these people have experienced a lot of trauma. Um, so we spend a lot of time getting them ready. For example, right now, I'm getting ready for two child victim sexual assault. I will be meeting with those children once a week or once every other week since the beginning of February and spending an hour or two with them to get them comfortable. They're just now getting like comfortable to talk to me about what happened to them by their dad. Um, so it, you know, it's just extremely intensive. So I guess in terms of the numbers, it can be a little misleading in, in terms of how much, I think my caseload is somewhere around a hundred and twenty. And then I would say I spend most of my day on administrative stuff um, as well. So it's finding that that time at night or on the weekends to work on my cases where I'm not interrupted by people having questions or needing things all day long, which is not a problem. It's what I, part of what I love. Um, and then I guess in addition to our caseload, I think we have a number of other duties that are not specific to cases. And so I would just add that, like, even if a case is closed and not reflected in our numbers, we are still um, dealing with those cases for years to come. Sometimes there are post-conviction motions, which are lengthy and complex, complex motions to turn um, get rid of the verdict. Um, violations of probation, deferred sentencing hearings, review hearings, um, grand jury. And then, then another huge part of my job too, and I think a lot of us do this, we um, almost everyone, I would say, is consulting with police departments regularly on a daily basis. We've had three ICAC warrants in the last week um, get executed. And the ICAC team is so thorough that we end up working with them from the beginning to make sure they're done correctly and accurately. Um, we run up against a lot of issues with the judges, so we constantly are doing like legal analysis on their warrants and the specific case that they have, whether we're meeting the statutory definition or the case law, um, the case law that kind of narrows down what we can and can't do with regard to that. And we've had some issues with a particular judge, so we're meeting to analyze that and say, how can we best combat that and not get these cases dismissed before we even start, especially where, you know, I hope you guys have seen the news, the janitor one. Um, out of uh, New Market is one I've been working on. We um, another one that won't hit the news because he um, committed suicide before we could. So like, I was working that case for, you know, but, and then that happened. So it's just stuff that isn't reflected in the numbers, but takes up a ton of our time. So I would just say, I guess from my perspective, um, I know everyone in my office works incredibly hard and is not working eight hours. You know, they're working nights and weekends just to stay above water, and none of us feel like we're able to give our cases the, the time and attention they deserve. And I think the cumulative effect that has on your soul when you do this type of work is really difficult. And I think we're seeing that reflected in the people that are leaving to have smaller caseloads to feel like they can devote to their cases. Um, yeah. Been talking for a while.
How many cases, uh, I don't, yeah, these are, how many did you actually take to jury trials last year?
Um, I was in trial on four different cases last year for a total of um, seven weeks.
Okay, so you had four that went, of your one-twenty-ish. I was just trying to get a sense of how many actually went to jury trial?
Yeah, four um, aggravated felony sexual assault trials.
I think, I think I had about five or six trials last year, only one of which was about a week long.
Okay.
Um, and then the other ones were one-to-two-day trials, less serious cases, but obviously still requiring a fair amount of preparation dealing with victims and witnesses who.
But I also want to point out.
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna, if you don't mind just a second, I'm just gonna let him speak before we, then we can ask questions if that's okay.
So I'm John Goodlander, I'm one of the Assistant County Attorneys. Uh, I'm a line prosecutor in the office. I don't have any supervisory responsibility. I'm not really privy to the numbers that are in that letter, so I can really just speak from my experience of working in the office and dealing with other employees and other attorneys, um, some of whom have left the office, as Krista mentioned. So I just want to give you a little bit of background about sort of my career, because I think it's helpful to sort of give you some information about sort of the, the attorneys in the office and the level of workload that they're dealing with. So I started my career at a huge law firm in New York. You know, working eighty-hour weeks with, you know, super high-paid attorneys. I've worked at some of the biggest law firms in New Hampshire. I've worked in circuit courts, and I work here now. So I've had a huge amount of experience with all different types of lawyers. And I just want to put it on the record for the County Commissioners, and, you know, I'm not trying to suck up to my bosses or anything like that, but the senior people in our office are some of the most capable and competent attorneys I've ever interviewed. And that's across the board, all different kinds of attorneys. They put in a huge amount of work for the most serious kinds of cases. I mean, they're dealing with offenders that are huge high-risk for this community. Attorney Conway just tried a case with Attorney Chadwick and Attorney Buebler two weeks ago for probably one of the most serious cases I've ever heard of. And they're able to get convictions on all counts and make sure that this guy is not going to be back out of the community. So these are cases with huge risk on the offender side and a huge amount of trauma on the victim's side. And it takes that amount of work, and it's inspiring to see, um, you know, somebody that's progressing from less serious cases into more serious cases. It's inspiring to see how hard they're working on all these cases and the real level of justice that they're able to provide to the community. But from my perspective, one of the huge problems with, with caseload right now is that they don't have much backup on the less serious cases. So when you have so much turnover for attorneys, there's just fewer people to deal with those cases from the less serious to the middle-level serious cases. And when you have the institutional turnover, from my perspective, the other issue is that you don't get the level of training and experience to get newer employees from being able to handle your basic cases up to your more serious cases. From my perspective, you need to have, you know, three, four, or five years of experience before you're even really able to dip your toes into dealing with the most serious cases, most serious offenders, and most traumatized victims, because it takes that time dealing with work to really be able to get there. And you know, the last few people that have left have been in that sort of range where they're getting close to being able to deal with the most serious cases and take some of the pressure off from the senior-level attorneys. But we end up just losing them before really they're there. So that's, from my perspective, one of the biggest problems. You know, the other thing you got to think about too is that this is a county that's rapidly growing in size. I think, I looked it up last night, and these are Google numbers, but from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-two, the county grew almost fifteen percent in terms of population. So higher population, unfortunately, higher level of crime, more cases coming in. I'm not sure how that's reflected in the numbers, but there, there's a bigger population, more cases. And the cases are getting more complicated. I mean, even from lower-level cases, we're seeing a huge influx of digital evidence. Seeing a huge influx of forensic evidence. These cases, you know, even, so I'll just give you an example. I just got a case yesterday from Salem. They did a great investigation on an armed robbery. Two guys go in, they rob a guy at gunpoint, steal a hundred and something thousand dollars worth of big cartridges. Ten years ago, they probably never would have caught these guys, but Salem Police did an amazing job using huge amount of digital evidence, cell phone evidence, video evidence, and they figured out who it was, but that generated two thousand, three thousand pages worth of discovery to go through for what is a way less complicated case than a lot of attorneys are dealing with. So the cases are more complicated. I think there are more cases, and I think that with the caseload, we're just losing people. We're losing the people that are getting trained up and getting to the point where they can sort of deal with the most serious cases for the highest-risk offenders, so.
Okay.
That's my perspective.
And I know that some of the numbers are um, down this year with regard to felonies first, and that's a big concern. And what I'll say is, um, I'm aware of our cases where, that have been arrested, that are some of the bigger um, investigations that the PDs have going on that just haven't come through yet, because they take months at this point to come through the um, the PC hearings and be bound over from District Four. So I think that's the, a little bit of the delay there. So I guess I would just say, I, I, I don't know if the numbers are reflecting what we're experiencing at all, and as John said, they're more complex. I don't think I have a case that's less than five hundred pages, you know, like, I don't, I don't think I have a single one.
I just have a question. When you enter the case, so like, from my, you know, from the district or the, you know, police department end of it, we go to a PC hearing, it's, if the defendant either waves or PC is found, we send the case, I almost, I know that almost all the police departments immediately um, put the case up through the portal, right?
They don't know. We're actually not experiencing that right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, my, I guess anecdotally from, I can say maybe like a dozen communities I can speak to directly. It's like, you know, they send it up right away. So my question is not so much like that, but um, specifically about that timing, but with respect to your end, when a case comes up through the portal, are you entering it immediately? Like, does that get entered into the system and reflect the numbers that we're seeing?
Yeah, so case, yeah, that's, case intake, I met with case intake yesterday, I forgot to tell you about that. Um, so case intake is um, dedicated to that, and they do. So there's two people that are dedicated to entering it immediately upon coming through the portal. But they told me that they are getting bind-overs and still don't have um, reports and have the case from the police departments. So we're experiencing significant delays for whatever reason from the police departments that are not sending them up after arrest.
So they're not, but how, you're getting the bundle, so how do you know that it exists? Like, we're, so when it gets bound over, then you're entering it in before getting it sent, correct?
The actual. Then our case intake is having to hunt down the police departments and get the cases. So from what I understand, there's a significant delay right now.
Unusual, even before felonies, our suite, before, you know, this all changed um, back before, you know, two thousand eighteen, two thousand sixteen, whatever, we're, we're always trying to hunt down files from the police department.
And it's something that we've, like, I've had constant meetings, yeah, with London Dairy Police Department and um, Portsmouth has been really responsive lately, so I'm hopeful. I've met with them recently about them, about, and they're fantastic, so I'm, I'm hopeful, but you know, certain police departments I've met with on multiple occasions to try to correct this issue, which again, kind of falls in that category of admin and stuff that takes up my time. Um, but yeah, we just still don't see much of an improvement sometimes, unfortunately.
Commissioner Goddoo?
Um, do you keep track of your hours?
No, it's almost impossible, and I appreciate that sentiment.
And, and do you have, but do you have a sense of how many hours a week you put in?
Sure. Um, yeah, I say it's impossible because like, for example, um, I got a call that, like, I was about to walk out the door like four-thirty the other night, and I got a call about the ICAC warrant. So I was often on the phone with TCYF and um, various members of Portsmouth Dairy and um, what is that? Deerville P, PD, to try to coordinate that and make sure everyone was able to get a kiddo out of the house um, in a timely manner while also executing our warrant. So I think I was often on the phone for like two or three hours, and then the next morning I was on the phone from, you know, seven to seven-thirty dealing with it. Um, just while getting ready for work, you know, that kind of thing. So I would say it, it definitely varies. I would say on an average week, it's around fifty to sixty, and if I'm getting ready for trial, it's every waking hour.
How about for you?
That I'm not with my child.
Again, it, it, it varies greatly depending on where you are in terms of the case. Right now, I don't have a case that's ready to go to trial until June. So I'm probably working like four, between forty and fifty. If a case is going to trial, um, like Kristen said, a lot more than that. Because you have to deal not only with the cases going to trial, but you still have hearings in all your other cases. So you're dealing with all that. When you add in the fact that we have a yearly rotation for on-duty, which means that you're on-call for twenty-four hours for seven days, it can add up to basically being like, you're only working for that whole week. So for instance, I had a week last year where I was in trial with Attorney Conway on a significant sexual assault case, and I was also on-duty. Um, I think that week I probably worked at least seventy hours, maybe eighty. Um, so that's about it. Fortunately, right now, pretty normal hours for me, just because.
And I would like to point out, just in terms of, I know um, Commissioner Coyle was asking about jury trials. But the cases that resolve, sometimes we, we have to put more time into those cases, because you'll litigate motions and legal issues, and have multiple conversations, and sometimes a defendant will not plead out until you sort of get over all of those legal issues that people want to litigate. So sometimes we spend even more time on cases that plead out. Um, for instance, and again, this is just an example, but um, there was a, a case out of Phillips Exeter where a professor there sexually assaulted one of his students. And that case ultimately ended up, the guy ended up being guilty and going to prison, but that case was pending for over a year, and we litigated uh, multiple legal issues, had multiple hearings in court where I had to prep our witnesses and things of that nature. We also have something called a settlement conference where um, it's a type of hearing where you go before a judge who is, usually it's a retired judge, someone who's really experienced. And you go up and you basically, it's almost like you try the case. You basically give the, the court all the facts of the case. Um, you have your victim there who can give a victim impact statement. We discuss any legal issues, and then the judge kind of gives us input on what a resolution should be, but preparing for just a settlement conference can take weeks. Um, so again, it's, it's not, you know, the trial's very labor-intensive, but the rest of it is as wow, so I just wanted to point that out.
Um, so I just want to try, it's Kristen.
Yeah.
And John. Uh, first off, I want to just say thank you very much to both of you. We, we truly appreciate your hard work, no doubt. Um, and it's, thank you for coming in to speak up on, on letting us know what's going on and the, the caseloads and everything. So I, I don't think any of the Commissioners, all of the Commissioners would agree that we, we truly appreciate, appreciate our employees there, no doubt. My question would be, has anything changed, Pat, where, uh, for, for hires? Right now, we have three empties positions to fill, correct?
Yeah, we have three.
Well, can I speak? We, once under agreement.
Yeah.
Just giving that.
Yeah, no, away.
I haven't received word on that for sure yet, so.
Well, we've got the, on our end.
So you have three, but there's, there's three people that are not coming to the office right now that you have, um, is it three that we don't have coming?
So I have, I have two people that are, are, one, I'm ready to make an offer on it. I'm waiting on HR to get back to me as to what the salary I can offer is. I have another one that's ready to start in September. Um, and then I have a couple of law students that would also be ready to start. And I mean, we're in May right now. Anyway, they've already started in August. Um, so I'm at this point inclined to bring them on. As John said, what we really need right now is some relief for, John is um, progressing in a way that I'm very hopeful he can focus on just bigger cases and give some of the lead attorneys some relief. Um, and to do that, I need to have someone below John that can take on those cases that he's handling right now, you know?
So I just want to, I just want to give you a little bit of perspective as to
Yeah.
how we're looking at sort of the budget, I'd say. Currently in the budget, what, I think, there's been some discussion. Currently, as a placeholder, we have half a position. Meaning, we felt, and Commissioners can chime in if they, if they think that I'm off track here, um, so we felt that by the time you hired two, the half position you can actually fill for January. So that's currently in the plan. Um, we, we've got a, we've got a really tough, tough budget this year and, and um.
I hear you, and I guess my concern for that would be that we need people now, and we have people that are going to be ready. I could fill all four of those positions by August, based on the resumes that I have right now. Um, I have three actually that wanted to come in and interview. So I think, yeah, I guess I'm concerned the morale is really low right now, given how many people have left, and I think we're not able to fill them sooner.
Right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, I apologize for talking.
No, you're.
Um, I'm gonna ask you a question. So if we decide that we will honor that and fill that position, you'll have a full staff?
Yes.
Before we begin?
Before January?
But before July, right?
No, not before.
I'm sorry, within, within the next budget, you'll have a full staff?
Yes.
Okay, because uh, Commissioner Coyle made mention that there was a position that went unfilled for a year. And we were looking at that saying, well, if, if it was unfilled.
Your number.
Because, and, and so in essence, what we're doing is we're funding half of that vacant position.
Right, but, but I, I, my recollection is that I agreed not to fill that position so that we could give a stipend to the legal assistance.
That's right.
Correct.
And so, you know, that was sort of some give and take from, from me, um, because our legal assistants were, we were struggling with, with their morale at the time. Um, and I don't feel as if the office should be punished for that. Um.
And then lastly, my, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you didn't finish.
Right, so, but in terms of hiring people, we are fortunate that we have the people. Um, we, we've made offers to two people right now. I know um, background check is almost done with the first. The second one, we're just gonna start with. We just uh, we're talking to they are about making an offer to a second individual. A third person we've been talking to who has told us he will be um, coming back to the office.
Okay.
Um, and then we just have that one other position, and we have many resumes to go through, and it's probably gonna be a, a last student, but that's the type of person we need right now, someone who's just graduating.
No, my concern is even if we fund this half position, additional half position, that the workload is still heavy for you guys. And I do have concerns of burnout and stress for you guys, so um.
Well, I, you know, I. Well, I, you know, I. We are gonna continue to monitor the caseload, so, you know, it's only three months into this. Um, rewinding felonies far, so we're gonna continue to look at it. And if, if the ca, if the cases are reduced, then eventually it's possible that the caseload numbers will be reduced as well. Um, and that'll be a good thing, um, in terms of relieving some stress in the office and, and morale and things like that, so. Um, you know, I concede that we will get less cases, I mean, that's just what will happen, it's just, it's gonna be a natural result. Of the new legislation, but um. The interesting part will be just to see, okay, well, what is the caseload gonna be if they goes down and, you know? And I just don't think we've got enough time to really.
On the specifics for the D date, it appears based on the first quarter and I, I am saying, I understand, recognize your. Position or, you know, the cases aren't necessarily all coming up, but there's been a, and on average of fifty percent reduction in cases. Coming up for the first quarter, so that triage is like, that's like a hun, over a hundred and fifty cases that. Didn't come up or maybe right around there, um, that didn't come up, that aren't being distributed, so.
Yeah, I, I hear you and I, I'm curious to see if that stays or if we start to see it pick up as, you know, the. Cause January was obviously generally was the first time, first of that, um, I'm curious to see how that comes out and then I, what I'll say is. I'm very hopeful that it helps us right-size our caseload so that we are able to keep people. John spoke about kind of his previous experience, I was at Merrimack County Attorney's Office for six years prior to Rockingham County. And our caseload there was around what the A G and the New Hampshire Public Defender recommend and require of their attorneys. Um, which was seventy-five, um, for every attorney there, not a single attorney left while I was there for six years. Not a single one, um, and I don't, when I left, I think a couple of people left shortly after that because there was a change in, in county attorneys. Um, I was also at Hillsborough County for a number of years as an intern. When they were in their sort of sweet spot of had a great administration and had a good caseload and, and no one left for a very long time, so I think. I've had, I've been fortunate to kind of see what it looks like when people have a manageable caseload. And the effect of when it tips into this place that we're at right now.
I, I'll just make one comment on what I'm hearing here. Um, th- this is about our budget crunch and we have a very difficult budget in front of us and we need to find. Places to reduce uh, our costs, cause we're over by four million dollars than more than what we really think. It ought to be, um, I don't think this is the place to cut. I think that um, next year we should visit it and take a look at what's actually happened with the new law. I, I, I recognize that there's a significant initial reduction in the first three months of, of cases coming in, but. They're already overwhelmed and I don't think that we're doing the. Uh, residents of Rockingham County justice by reducing our ability to prosecute criminals. Uh, I think we need to, so I'm gonna be in favor of keeping the position at full time.
So we're not gonna, we're gonna be talking about budget after this, the regular meeting. You're free to, to, to stay if you want that, um, you guys wanna stay, that's fine too, it's gonna be a while before we get there, but. You know, if you have other things to do, we understand, we haven't made any final decisions at this point, but.
Well, thank you so much.
We appreciate you coming and letting us know how things go.
Thank you so much for listening to us talk.
Pleasure meeting you.
I will respectfully also.
I know you guys are busy with a workload, so, thanks for coming in again.
Just hope I don't meet you on the other side.
Well, I have space for you.
Alright, so now we're doing uh, line item transfer approval for Department of Corrections.
I move to approve the line item transfer request in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Transferring from inmates at other facilities to non expendable equipment as recommended by the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Second, motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on this motion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
An objective to, just only that, it's an objective to help with the next year's bill. Offset some additional potential costs for next year, so I'm a yes.
And, yes, and I'm a yes, three nothing, okay, so we're on to a line item transfer from Juve Gate's office.
I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Transferring from rehabilitation and nursing center fuel to the Department of Corrections Purchase Services and ten thousand dollars transferring from rehabilitation. And nursing center fuel to shared vehicle maintenance as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and I T.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, is there discussion on this one?
I'm glad the uh, milder weather has helped to offset the increased cost in all other areas of life.
Um, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Was that a gay for global warming?
But, touche.
Have a little fun.
Line item transfer, next one.
I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of thirty-six thousand five hundred and two dollars dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Transferring from employer FICA and employer retirement to staff and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars transferring from employer. Retirement and intermediate nursing care and app to technical and trade salaries as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and I T.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, uh, any discussion?
Just to, um, this should get us through the rest of the year, June.
We're gonna have to keep looking at it, actually, we're hoping that it will, it may not.
So they'll take care of the staff line for sure, uh, technical trade, we have to see like what the ultimate like, uh, use of, um, of. Yeah, comes in at and see what we've got for, you know, overtime, stuff like that, um, other components of technical trade salary line, but. There are another like four executive for me means after May third. And that and including the, uh, approval of the budget, hopefully for June nineteenth, so.
Hopefully with some of our new hires, it should reduce the use of, of contracted trades because we're.
It has reduced it already, so.
We're seeing the decline, but this is a product of.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes, next one.
I move to approve like line item transfer request in the amount of eighteen thousand six hundred and eighty dollars dated, dated April ninth, twenty twenty-four. Transferring from service contracts to telephone communications as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and I T.
Second, motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on this motion?
What was the tel- telephone communication?
Sure, we had to um, pick up the speed, if you will, for our internet coverage, so we have, you know, the big grocery project happening at Sheriff's Department, we have. Uh, we give up some of the services at the courthouse and then as well as here in the nursing home and, and in the complex, so. Um, you know, we've got more speech as a result of that when you just take that out, yeah.
Is it, um, that will, this, this will get us through the end of the year?
It will. Hand in budget for the coming year.
Okay.
Further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, uh, Strata North confidentiality agreement?
Move to approve the Strata North confidentiality agreement in preparation for review and possible modification in addition of the existing cyber policies listed in the Personnel Policies and Procedures. Section seventeen dash six and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the I T manager.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Happy we're, we're in progress.
Alright, now we're on to human resource position changes, launch and care services.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion, i- it's going to be lengthy, but I'm gonna do all at once, um, and. Or, because the position changes are all.
Actually, um, do you mind, we'll wait for, uh, Commissioner. We'll just take a quick sec, uh, thirty seconds. Sorry about that.
Oh, no, thank you, I was. Rattling on.
And sorry, so. Apparently correcting the double sided illegal takes a little bit longer. It's a little bit slower.
Sure, so we're up to uh, human resources position changes and I'm about to uh, read a number of. Uh, repurposes and title changes, all part of one uh, global initiative, so. I move to repurpose, regain the title change, one full-time position Assistant Director of Nursing, grade twenty-one to one full-time position. Director of Clinical Services, grade twenty-five. I move to repurpose, regrade and title change, one full-time manager of quality and risk management, grade eight, R eighteen to one full-time position. Assistant Director of Long-Term Care Services, grade twenty-five. A repurpose, regrade and title change to one full-time salary exempt position. Professional Development and Advanced Clinical Learning Manager, grade R nineteen to one full-time hourly. Non-exempt position, infection preventionist and clinical educator, grade one, R twenty. And move to repurpose and title change, one full-time position, infection prevention, preventionist, grade R seventeen to one full-time position. Health Resource Supervisor, grade R seventeen. Repurpose and move to repurpose and title change, one part-time position, twenty-four hour weekly administrative assistant. Uh, in, in environmental services, grade R nine to one part-time position, twenty-four hours weekly, medical records technician, grade R nine.
Second.
I'm sorry, um, I. I move to defund, thank you, one uh, full-time position Environmental Service Manager, grade R eighteen. And I move to regrade and title change, one full-time position Environmental Services Coordinator, grade R fourteen to one full-time position. Environmental Services Supervisor, grade R sixteen.
Okay, so, any second?
Second. Yeah, I didn't see that last.
Alright, yeah, on page three, that, your fourth.
Okay. Yes.
Alright, any, any discussion on the motion?
I think we should just in terms of for the public, talk a little bit about, this has been, um, there's been ongoing work and this is for. The, as we look to the future of how long-term care services um, is trending and the future movement. Um, this is an effort to um. Most, be most responsive to changing requirements in reporting as well as efficiencies within operations. In the current environment that we are in, so um, I, you know, there was a lot of effort and a lot of hours spent by many. Um, many collaborating with many different departments to reach this uh, this proposal. And um, it's also important to note in, in an effort to get the, you know. Have uh, the best people in the positions at, and also be uh, budget conscious, so that's where we came out and I think. I commend um, the team for working to um, really try to put together, piece the puzzle together. To make uh, long-term care run as efficiently and effectively as possible.
I, I concur, uh, we've been given lots of detail, this reorganization, I think is in the best interest of. Uh, the long-care term facility and uh, I think there are well thought out. Uh, changes that will uh, help us maintain the management that we have for a long period of time. Uh, it improves the efficiency and um, we've been discussing this a lot and I, you know, we're. This is not, yeah, it's not all of a sudden that we're coming up with this, um, and appreciate all the hard work. Um, and I agree with the motion completely.
And, and I'm just gonna say that um, you know, being here three years. Vincent Smith at the helm, you know, five-star rating. Uh, with Medicaid dot gov, two years deficiency free, uh, you know, it's just incredible to think about where the nursing home. Long-term care has come over, over the last three years, it's been great. I'm very happy that I can be supportive uh, in using the tools that that department uh, needs and wants, uh, and so. Um, uh, I agree with both other commissioners that uh, this is probably a step in the right direction here. Uh, and change is hard sometimes, but sometimes change is needed, so um, I think moving forward. This is what was requested, um, and so I'm gonna honor that as well, so. Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Okay.
Alright, so we are on to job descriptions.
I move to approve job descriptions for Director of Clinical Services, Assistant Director of Long-Term Care Services, infection preventionist and clinical educator. Health Resource Supervisor, Medical Records Technician, Environmental Services Supervisor.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, um, on the motion, Commissioner.
This is just for comments, this is a, this is a companion motion to um, the previous motion, which is. Yeah, the changes in type and descriptions, as part of the descriptions related to the repurpose, rebate and title change.
So on, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes, motion number two.
I move to approve the Director of Nursing Revised Job Description.
Second.
Second, uh, any, just any uh, discussion on that? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Boil?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're on to wellness activity onsite hybrid cooking class.
I move to approve a wellness activity onsite hybrid cooking class utilizing signal wellness dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on this one?
Allison, thank you for all you do with some chocolate ones, so we hope everybody.
I didn't bring it up to a hundred and twenty degrees, you bring it back to ninety degrees and then you dip. Oh, I thought that was a real question.
I do wanna say that Allison, your team really always comes up with these really creative um, initiatives. For utilizing wellness dollars and I do, it's, it's nice, it's just an, I like, um. Fun morale booster for employees and so we appreciate, I, I know I certainly, I think everybody does appreciate your team's creativity, so thank you.
Okay, so on the, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes, long-term care line item transfer approvals.
I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of six hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Transferring from intermediate nursing care and app to dietary services contracts as recommended by. The Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion?
Um, it's probably worth having a little bit of a. About uh, where some of these line item transfers and what they're generated from. And there's two main uh, places that this is coming from, one, increased cost from Glendale Dining. As a result of a number of increased food costs, unexpected increased food costs as well as um. The, as part of our project for the um, dishwasher, which was a really very necessary project and. But it took longer than expected just because sometimes these things happen and as a result, there was a lot more paper good usage. Which really has driven up the Glendale unexpected cost to Glendale Dining, so. Um, and I guess my question is with respect to this is, do we think that this will? Help get us through the end of the um, twenty twenty-four, yes?
Yes, in fact, the, the whole dishwasher project was about twenty percent of this total.
Just from our ongoing meetings that we have with Glendale, I think that they have heard our concern. Um, and we continue to be with them and work with them, um. I think part of the overall concern is the ongoing increase in food costs and labor, um, and we. Within our contracts, um, I think that's one of the reasons why we will be looking at that um, in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, one thing I do is worth recognizing is that how much, how many meetings trying to, you know, really. Keeping a close, close cap of this, scheduling meetings, trying to work to make sure that um. All the effort you can to. Make sure we're not overspending and over, you know, over ordering and all the attendant issues.
The food, the food waste and, um, yeah, so there, the message has been.
Question, Roger.
Uh, I recognize the issues with uh, Glendale and that we're working on that, that's good, but um. Questioning, why do we have such a huge surplus in intermediate nursing care?
So even though we knew that the, the cap was um, according to main level at the state side of things. But each county's piece of that gross cap could be different depending upon how our last three years of average claims. Medicaid claims went compared to the other nine counties. We're, I think, only one of a couple counties that actually had a decrease in our allocated cap and it was a significant one at that. And so that's just what's allowed for us to. and it was a significant one at that. And so that's just what's allowed for us to have this much left remaining, definitely remaining, cause it's the one that, you know, aside from the July bill that has the credit, all the other eleven months are the very same amount.
So it was an unexpected.
Correct. I mean, but again, I have to budget, you know, conservatively, actually going the other way in case somehow our allocation goes up by like one percent. Because, and you know, there are a couple of counties, I think Hillsboro and Merrimack that saw significant increases that they wouldn't know about until, you know, they got their allocated caps in like July.
Yeah, okay, understood, thank.
Uh, and then I'm just gonna, uh, chime in on the dishwasher too, that was an old machine that was really leaking and whatnot and we really needed to, to change that. We had some unexpected, uh, issues with the, the fitting and whatnot, that was really unexpected, but, when excited, it really was a must, we, we had to do it, so, um.
Every, every time we tried to fix it, there was extra pieces of the.
Right, right.
Like, where does this go?
Right, it's just not, you know, it's not a, uh, uh, it wasn't a simple process of just swapping in on chain. We'd had fittings and whatnot that used to get done and. Yeah, and we just, you know, collectively, we didn't wanna mess around with that, so we, we made a decision to get that done at, at that time. Unfortunately, we had some, some costs that, um, that we didn't really plan on that we, we had to deal with, but at least we're gonna do that, so. So on the motion, uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, next line item transfer?
I move to approve a line item of transfer request in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, transferring from assisted living ER, TICA and assisted living ER retirement to assisted living staff as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on this?
This, this is supposed to get us through, this will get us through the end of the year, which is good.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes, next one. Next line item transfer.
I move to approve the line item of transfer request in the amount of one million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars dated April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, transferring from many staff lines to nursing staff as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion on these motions?
Do we have a little clarification on what many staff lines means? I mean, did you just go through the entire budget and pick and choose?
It's all in the.
I analyzed, um, each of the lines that were transferring from to make sure it was also enough for him that if we did have a little spike of employment, that it should be able to, to cover that as well. Um, so I didn't go through all the lines, but that, this is still, uh, what, twelve, thirteen? The lines to analyze and so, a-again, I, I've, what I did with the health line is that I went back and looked at how many, um, filled positions actually took health versus what was budgeted for and left placeholders, again, in case we do hire for smoking positions. And so that, so actually, there'll be a, um, general ledger warrant as well that will reduce the amount of health expense for these lines that we're asking to transfer from for health and that'll.
Um, just a couple of things, I'm gonna start by saying, thank you, Chuck. Um, you know, we are in a really, really challenging time with, uh, nursing staffing for nursing, unprecedented, I'm, I, you know, there are people in this room who have been here a lot longer than me and I'm sure Chuck, Allison, um, you guys have, you've probably never seen from a financial and HR perspective, anything like this in your tenure about, um, the, the, just rapid change in how nursing is staffed, which is, and, and where we are, um, we have gone from, to a point where we're almost in, the percentage of agency is overwhelming and associated with that is, incredible cost that I think even a year ago when we were, we did not, we did not anticipate the level of, uh, of contracted nursing, um. Chuck, uh, without your wizardry, we would be in a, you know, really, really, um, even more difficult place, so, and I know it's a lot of hours and efforts to do this, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I, what I will say is, this addresses one piece of the puzzle, but we are like, actively continuing to look at this and what we can do and I know Jason, everybody's like, it's all hands on deck to, uh, try to triage this situation.
And, and yes, this is, I mean, I'll, I'll be honest, this is an interim, transfer role can need additional funds and I do have thoughts of where at least, a few other lines that might be available, um, obviously, I'm, I'm just trying to stay as much within, you know, what Jason's saying, within long-term care.
Yes.
Expense lines, um, but again, this is where we do have the benefit during the budget process, again, there's another, four, I believe, executive committee meetings that happened, you know, after May third, the next scheduled executive committee meeting and the, half hour meeting that they will hold on June nineteenth before passage of the budget, so.
Um, further discussion? Give anything?
Nope, I, I just wanna say a couple of things, um. You know, coming out of COVID was really tough and the fact that, you know, we, we are a five-star rated long-term care facility um, and efficiency-free really speaks volumes as to our employees and the management here. Um, I just wanna share with everybody that this is just, this is not a unique problem to Rockingham County, this is happening all over the country. Um, we, we have a desperate shortage of nurses throughout the country and, uh, we also have, um, they, they, they can't, they don't, they can't find teachers to teach these nurses, so, it's not a easy solution to deal with. Um, in my humble opinion, I, I, I think it's more of a five-year problem. Um, and I did, um, look at, excuse me, an op-ed from Brendan W. Williams, who posted a, an op-ed, union leader, which really, uh, it goes on, it's a lengthy op-ed, but I just wanna, uh, point out one piece of that op-ed where it says, "A healthcare labor crisis is revealed by the fact that the state itself, despite offering attractive union wages and benefits, recently tripled the cost of its temporary staff contract at New Hampshire Hospital and Glendale Home to eleven million, five hundred thousand. Of the sixteen staffing agencies contracted, but only two are based in New Hampshire." So, the alarm bells have been ringing for many years, uh, and we just can't snap our fingers and solve this problem overnight, but, I, I, I trust the team here at Rockingham County and our, um, upper management that we, we, we should probably, maybe start meeting occasionally to see what we can do to, A, bring down some of the cost of traveling nurses and, finding ways to attract employees, I know we've had some discussions on that, but, uh, I just wanna point that out, it's not a unique situation. I did ask NHAC to, um, ask the other counties in the state of how much they're using for, contracted services and the counties that are our size are, are very similar, are close to using the same amount. Um, some of the smaller counties up north use it a little bit less, but they're in a different marketplace. You know, we're, we're, we're pretty close to the Massachusetts line, so, you know, trying to find nurses here is just a little bit more challenging, um, and so we recognize that, we recognize it's a tight budget, but I feel that we can get through it. Um, and then moving forward, we just, um, need to heighten our awareness of how we can make things better, so. Um, uh, with that, on the motion to approve, uh, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um, Alliance Group Services?
I move to approve Alliance Group Services LLC contract addendum for the period beginning July twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, extending the original contract through June twentieth, twenty twenty-nine and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended, uh, by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, now, is this, is this contracted nursing in this one?
No, this is, this is, uh, appliance.
Yeah, okay, okay, sorry, I, I didn't.
Maintain the dishwasher, uh, excuse me, the walk-in refrigerators, the freezers and, um, the ice maker.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're on to Compasses?
Compasses.
Compasses.
I move to approve the Compasses Greater Manchester Agreement for an initial term beginning April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four for one year with automatic renewals for additional one turn, one-year terms and authorize the chair to sign also necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second made and seconded, you know, any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we're on to Department Heads, I wanna start with Jason Smith.
All right. Not used to being in this area, uh, let's see, um, we had a, uh, community education event, um, to learn about advanced directives and how to complete them, so that was open to the greater community and we had several people participate, which was nice. Uh, also, this week, we held our Quality Assurance Performance Improvement Meeting, that's on a quarterly basis, that provided, um, the presentation in detail to you and my weekly board report. Um, please let me know if there's any questions, um, on our quality standards. Um, Health Pro Heritage Restorative Manager, um, will be leaving us to go back to, um, pediatric. She wanted to try senior care, um, but instead she has discovered her passion is really with little, little kids. So she'll be heading back there, so we're actively recruiting for a new restorative manager now. Um, and then as, uh, just some facts, um, open nursing positions, we currently have a hundred and thirty-three, um, active county nursing staff, this is direct care staff, full-time, part-time per D fifty-one and then nursing active agency travelers that we use are a hundred and seven, so.
Thank you for those numbers.
Um, also, just to let you know and, uh, just thanks to, uh, Jude as well, um, we had, uh, a retired dentist reach out to us, um, that was willing to donate the dental chair and conveniently, our dental chair broke. So, uh, we were able to get a, uh, used but still very operative, uh, dental chair, so we reduced the budget by seven thousand dollars just a little bit, uh, by just to help out, yes, so.
All set, Jason?
Awesome.
All right, gonna go to the other, Jason.
Good morning. Uh, thank, thank my transfer, that will help with next year's budget by being able to get the.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that.
And the dishwasher, uh, take care and there's move to committees to be reduced. Um, for a hundred and forty in-house today, um, as some of you might saw, went down and testified on a bill this past week for, uh, it was put in by one of the House Representatives that if you have a felony level, um, case, they could be sentencing and a trial and, when I say be there, means that they, including if the person doesn't wanna go, um, which could cause some issues, cause if we have to physically move somebody, it could cause, uh, our staff to get hurt, inmate to get hurt, lawsuits, bills, those kinds of things. Um, it's a kind of a, it's a remotely charged one, reaction to the Adam Montgomery, um, case, um, cause he did not show up to his trial, he thinks not gonna show up to sentencing, so there, it's a gut reaction to, on that individual wanting there, but it could have long-lasting consequences if they change it into the law, so I testified in opposition to it. Um, so did the state prison, um, so there's a big turn of the bash, so we'll see what happens.
Was that Representative Sherrill?
Yes.
Yeah.
He's willing to put it through, um, also, so, this afternoon, I had a meeting with a, a gentleman named Patrick Cannon, he's from, um, this, this, the Disability Rights Center, sued St. Anne Hampshire under harassment years ago for more bed space, basically for, those are mentally illness, well, those beds would never come available if you got far back. So then they hired, um, a man named Patrick Cannon, he is, um, as a consultant to look at, see what's been done and why things haven't been done and, um, how it affects and part of this, you know, whether house effects, the jails are having effects and stuff, so I have a meeting with him this afternoon. Um, bail reform, they took all, all six bills combining to one, uh, adding magistrates on weekends and other things, it's kind of a mess. So we met last week, super tense, some other people, cause they also added in electronic monitoring and the pre-trial stuff, which, would force the counties in certain directions that some counties can't do, um, costs and those kinds of things. So we took the time to try to rewrite some of the bill, uh, yesterday, went back in front of the committee, uh, Kate Oregon represented it yesterday, along with, I think, um, Ray Bauer went down from Traverse, I believe. Uh, cause this was, so many issues came from people concerned that Traverse County is having inmates, uh, cut wood uh, under electronic monitoring or bail, whatever, so there's an issue.
Electronic mon.
Uh, under, under, yeah, for pre-trial, making them work. Anyways, so now it has to be kind of revamped again, so tomorrow at the Association of Counties meeting, uh, someone will stay behind, you mean, uh, Kate Quill will continue working on that bill. If it passes and they do magistrates, ten magistrates supposedly, and that means there are certain crimes, individuals won't be able to see a bail commissioner, they have to see a magistrate within twenty-four hours. That's gonna mean for us, that we're gonna have to have video arrangements available on weekends, which means I don't have that right now, so that's, a small staff member to do video arrangements or it's gonna be manpower, those kinds of things.
That also means that if it's, I mean.
Well, felonies will still be arraigned in district court.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
So, it's gonna be very interesting, uh, and right now, there's no one that needs the criteria of, of what a magistrate is, except for like, I think bottling. It's the only one, and so binding ten magistrates, I don't know how it's gonna happen, uh, plus the, the pre-trial release stuff they're trying to do, you know, with electronic monitoring, uh, it's very interesting, they're trying to bind it to one, they're hoping it just gets tabled and moved on, but, it, it's just, they, they put everything in one.
Will they do add-ons like on weekends too, like people that are picked up on warrants?
So, there's like. No, uh, well, I mean, the magistrate's one that works for like, if it's sexual assault cases or, uh, uh, kidnappings, your assaults, your murders, there's others, a criteria that they want a magistrate for, and a bail commissioner can still do the other pieces of it, and then in the state, we pay the bail commissioners too rather than according to this bill.
So the more serious offenses they wanna use a magistrate for over the weekend as opposed to holding them from Friday to Monday? I'm just trying.
Yep.
It's inconsistent.
Like I said, they took like the six bills and tried to cram into one, which is also a problem, cause they added so many pieces and parts to this thing.
So the less serious offenses that, uh, like, if you get arrested for a DV offense and, are like a violation of protective order, that is not, they're not going to be, they're gonna sit the weekend.
They'll also see bail commissioner.
Well, no, I know, but if there's like a no bail hold because of whatever that they get out on the Monday, then, for violation of protective order, for instance.
Yep.
Okay.
The, you can see in track.
You'll be monitoring that, right?
I was still working on it again, tomorrow I'll be working on it, so that's that one. Um, just so you know as well too, I know I talked to you guys before, referenced the, uh, first graduations next week for one twenty-second academy, that's next Friday, that I won't be here, but we'll have three staff members back from that academy, which is great. Um, I, I know I spoke to you in the past about Lucky Film Crew possibly doing, uh, a show in jail, we'll be starting process of, um, we interviewed a bunch of inmates yesterday, they're interviewing some of our females at the Carol today, try and narrow it down, see what will work for them. Um, and then their producer might be coming out and doing some interviews, so we are moving forward and it looks like we probably will do some film, moving along with that pathway. And that is all I have for.
So, yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, we go to Pat Conway.
I don't know, I think we've spoken enough.
Okay, all right. Jude gave.
Done enough.
Morning.
Jude.
Hi, uh, it's pretty much situation as usual for us, all's well, we're busy. Um, other than what's going on in the new building, you might have noticed the crane today is gone.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Um, they've started pouring slabs in the corrections section out back. Tuesday, when I was up there, they had eighty people crawling around the place working, they're expecting to be up to a hundred and fifty or more by the middle of the summer, so, they're hitting it hard and they're making really good progress now that the weather's broken, it's pretty cool.
This week has been a great building.
It's going up fast.
Yeah.
Um, other than the building, we have, uh, a meeting with, our consultants on the PFAS, cause you know, there was a change and we're still in process, we're waiting to see what DES. I'm gonna meet with them tonight and see what they have to say. Additionally, I reported a few weeks back, there was a presence of PFAS that found out with the spray irrigation site in the monitoring walls, they made us test it. I think it's every three years we have to test it. I'm meeting, um, as well on Friday with somebody from DES to find out what they want us to do going forward. Trying to figure out what the source is, it's higher up there, it doesn't appear to be coming from the wastewater, but, but one of our neighbors years and years ago had sludge spread on the fields and, I'm just trying to kind of explore what the potential source is, so that's just one other thing that we're working on.
And didn't the feds come down with, um, some PFAS regulations, so we gotta watch that because that could affect our wastewater stuff.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
And I think it, it was. And I think it, it was written such that the state has to deduct at least as stringent a level.
And they were already strict as well.
They were, so.
So something to keep our eye on.
Absolutely, yeah. It's, it's affecting the permitting for well number two, just one more thing, because I know it's kind of boring for everyone. But well number four is pending approval, they still have a bunch of questions and we're answering them and it's a process. But initially we had planned to decommission entirely well number two, which really we thought would be desirable for them in approving the. Now, now they're thinking they may want us to keep it available just for PFAS testing. Because the thought is that it's coming from, it, it's coming from the fire training school. And if we're pulling the apron for that way to wells three and four, that well two would sort of reveal if there's.
Oh, right, right.
Increasing, so almost like a century well.
Yeah.
So it's just like another piece of like where it's all coming from.
Yeah. Uh, and if, if you don't mind, um, I, I don't know if I mentioned last week that I was, uh, uh, uh. I came over and toured the building. Um, and I did tell a little quick funny story, um. The, the gentleman at Harvey, um, his name is, his name is Bill Conti and, uh. He's toured me through a couple of times before and, uh, actually he, you know, he put on his, his helmet, he gave me a helmet. And so we started walking out, I noticed that he's got a Blue Devil logo. And I graduated Salem High School in nineteen eighty, and so I recognized the logo. And so I said to him, um, did you go to Salem High? Yeah, I did. When did you graduate? Nineteen eighty. Anyway, so we knew each other back in high school. But it's kind of neat, the fact that he told me that he was ready to retire. Um, when he was working at the Woodbury School. Um, and Harvey had asked him to stay on specifically for this, this one because he's that good. So he toured me through, it looks awesome, uh, and it was right before the concrete pour, but. Um, man, it looks great, and I could actually see the field where the soil is gonna go, they staked it out.
Oh, cool.
So it's kind of neat, but anyways, thank you for indulging me on it. Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
I, I just add to your comments, uh, the, um, the school board. Lamented when Bill Conti left early before Woodbury was quite done to come over here and work with us. They were in great shape and had their, their opening though, but, and they're doing a great job, so.
And I hadn't seen him, I hadn't. You know, and I'm dating myself, I hadn't seen him for forty-five years, so we had a lot of catching after this anyway. Anyway, I'm gonna go to Major Bashaw, Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, good morning, um, so it is, uh, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, uh. National Dispatcher Week, uh, and thank you for mentioning, uh, so Lauren Shealy. Uh, he did receive, uh, the dispatcher of the year award from the New Hampshire, uh, Dispatchers Association, so they had a banquet the other day. But I also wanna mention that, uh, Chad Murphy was, he was one of the final nominees for dispatch trainer of the year through that organization, so. Represented, uh, that statewide organization, so that was nice to see. Um, I just, I know, uh, Jason Henry was talking about some, uh, bills going on. Uh, I'm not sure if maybe the, the county or the Association of Counties has been watching, uh, Senate Bill, uh, four sixty-two. Uh, it increases the amount of, uh, it increases the threshold by more than three hundred percent. On the amount that people can sue for wrongful death cases. Quality wise and insurance, uh, so a, a couple of state reps had reached out to us and I said. We've been fortunate that we haven't had any of those at the sheriff's office, but it is always a possibility between sheriff's office, the jail, nursing home, anything. Uh, with people in our care, so I, I just wasn't sure if anyone was watching that, because there could be a financial impact that's passed on to them.
So Jason Henry wants to chime in on that.
Just quickly, you know, so yeah, association is watching on it, the next, uh, the twenty-fourth, there's more testimony. Um, Kathy Stacy, uh, myself, a bunch of people put stuff in, Prime X put, uh, a letter in as well because. If that cap goes away there, they probably have to raise their fees, a little cost of county, so that alone without even having somebody to sue. Would, uh, would raise our costs right from the get-go, um, so there is a lot of opposition against this, um. Uh, so there is definitely association counties that are against it and we've been watching it very closely.
Okay, great, yeah, I just, I, like I said, a couple of state reps have reached out to me and I said that it seems like. Better suited to be handled by the Association of Counties. Um, but, uh, other than that, everything's great at the sheriff's office, things are moving along, sheriff apologized he couldn't be on this morning.
All right, thank you, Major. Um, Allison.
Hi, um, I wanted to announce that the Teamsters Legal Assistance, um, group met yesterday. And they voted to ratify the contract.
Very good.
So that's a good thing, I got a copy of the yesterday option and not that. Um, we've been really just busy, um, I was doing a lot of stuff for the, um. NCU contract, uh, preparation, all the articles, those all went over to them yesterday. I'm just waiting tomorrow, the next day to feedback to make sure that's all accurate, and once they have that. They'll move forward and host their ratification meeting and then we will be ready. Um, we did have some, um, Julie and I spent some time on the wages and the, um, proposals of charts. Like we've done the last forty years for decompression and equity in the pay plan now that everything's moving. So we'll talk about that later today, um, and then we're just getting ready for the open enrollment. All the information went over to the vendors, um, through the broker, and now we're just, um, gathering all that stuff. And starting to prep the, uh, system that we have to do to load everything in there and get it ready and maybe, um. Hopefully, we don't have a dev, uh, environment to do it on, so it's like go live with no safeguards. And that's a problematic for us as well as things on Chuck, but we, that's, we have no alternative, so we'll do our best and hope for. I'm assuming we'll be okay, um, and we'll start sending out communications to the departments to post about mandatory time. And we'll send out a postcard to employees as well.
Allison kept her eyes right on Chuck the whole, the whole time. All right, so I just wanna say, um, before I, um, acknowledge Leila, but I just wanna thank, um. Allison, Chuck, Commissioners Coyle and Commissioner Goddard for a job well done with the, the unions. Um, to finalize those, so thank you all for the hard work there.
And we did host our, the, um, official division directors and officials, um, committee was this week as well. Um, and that was attended by three, uh, the elected officials.
Yeah.
They have sold that way well.
Um, gonna go to Leila.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, I don't have anything.
Nothing? So now, um, just let us know, you're going on vacation pretty soon, right?
August.
Oh, August, okay, we still have a little rest.
That's moving.
So, all right, um.
TikTok, TikTok.
Anybody else have anything they want, Chuck, Chuck? Did I get you, Chuck? Oh, I'm sorry.
So, uh, obviously no surprise budgets, budgets, budgets. Please keep in mind that, um, when I hand out the stuff as far as numbers through six thirty. Those numbers will change as we get more and later, better information. So, um, but yes, yes, more actual than estimates. Numbers, um, I always prefer the actual versus estimates.
Because commissioners, we can't change anything after today, right?
Well, I mean, there is, there is the, before it goes out, I mean, the estimate numbers could change. Um, because we, you know, again, I'd rather put as much accuracy in those six-three numbers. But obviously what would not change is what the commissioners, we, you finally agree on what's gonna be proposed for appropriations for the next year.
Right.
I mean, the, the six-thirty estimates are just what they are.
Yeah.
Um, but again, I'd rather have the users of those budgets, you know, whatever version that goes out, have the most. Accurate current year information possible.
Okay.
Um, obviously, again, month after quarter end, so grants, grants, grants as well, so that's going on, um. Yesterday I did go to, to Concord, um, testify on the Senate Bill five-five-three, the one that would kill the. The entry policy, that's one.
So reading the room, what do, what do you think's gonna happen?
Well, um, I thought testimony wasn't gonna go as long as it did, so I had to leave or else, you know, my guests took around my car. Um, but for when I was in there, um, obviously there was some representative of the bankers.
Yeah.
Brian Gottlob got up as far as the research firm of one person, um, it's, he's Polycon Research, but it's one person. Um, and that's the study that the state senate and all the reps were given as far as relying on for numbers to. As the Bankers Association claimed would be fact. Not predictions, I thought, predictions, predictions, not just fact, but, um, but anyways, uh. Contrary to the testimony in the senate, when I was the only one testifying in opposition this time, lots of towns. Did come out.
Well, that's good.
Um, even the city of Manchester, like theorized could very well be the biggest investor in the pool. Um, was supposed to come as well.
Was my town history?
I don't know, what happened was, it was odd, after I, I testified and I was back out in the hallway, because someone. Scooped up my empty seat, I mean, it was standing remotely, there was overflow out into the hall.
Wow, okay.
Oh, yeah. And, and yeah, they only allotted half an hour, and I guess it was actually gonna be a work session on, on the bill too, I guess.
Yeah.
That's later in the month, so I have to make sure, obviously I'll be there for that. Um, if they want me, um, but, uh, it was interesting, because even a couple of the reps even stepped out. And other people who were listening came and just talked to me about it. So again, if I did, you know, aside from the, the expected ones that testified in favor of, there was a lot more against.
My, my debt failings originally, they didn't, I mean, get both sides of the story. And they got sold one side, that was very, very convincing. And then all of a sudden, you know, people chimed in.
The, the Bankers Association has been pushing this hard, they've got a sheet of talking points going on for months. And it's not just like bank presence, if I think it's a full court press that they're doing on.
That's a big lie.
Yeah, if I, you know, again, so this, this, it, it makes even more humorous as far as that lobbying bill. That would make it prime for like myself or Jason to go and represent the county on the bill.
Yeah.
But any fathers can run around promoting whatever.
Exactly.
So, um, yeah, so testimony and bills, obviously, you know, we're, we're very active, Rockingham County, we have many members who are on that legislative committee. And Kathy Stacy chairs it, she's always up there testifying on behalf of the counties.
Yeah.
So again, we, I think Rockingham County do a good job of trying to represent, you know, obviously Rockham first, but all the, the counties to make sure that. You know, bad legislation doesn't get passed and good legislation does, because obviously we, we do testify for when we can.
Yes.
And again, just overall extremely busy and I'll do selfish like wellness plug, I guess. Um, so Brentwood Rec Department has a co-ed over thirty softball team. And so signups are going on right now, and I think the deadline for signups is like late May, so. Uh, it used to be the team was like primarily Rockingham County employees, now it's, it might be just me. Might just be me, like former employees and family and friends or other residents of the, of the area or Brentwood. I know we have a couple, just, uh, I think it's Washington Street, this down the, the road here that are on the team as well.
You say that, under, uh.
It's over thirty, but they're changing the rules that, that, uh, females can be twenty-five or over to, to play. Sometimes it's been hard to, uh, for other teams, not for us, uh, for other teams to get, um, the minimum number. Sorry.
What?
Let me lay some play.
Here's a comic relief.
Anyway, it's that, that's, that's my plug for that, so. And I'll try to get something in for the county newsletter and that too, so, so thank you.
Okay.
It's a fun time, we play it, I think, the right way.
Very good, uh, anything else the department heads wanna mention at all? All right, we're gonna move on to new business, old business, does anyone have any new business?
I have an item on the agenda.
Oh, yes, yeah, let's do, let's take care of that, um, it's a fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the, uh, department proposed budget, there was an error.
I made an error.
The calculation.
Yeah, I made an error when I entered my numbers for, uh, laundry repairs. I covered in my narrative saying we added sixty-five hundred for some well extra tanks. It's at the end of the line, the existing tanks have failed, we're having the problem with water hammer. Instead of putting two thousand by the end of the year and eighty-five hundred next year, I, I transpose the numbers. So I do need to request an adjustment up of sixty-five hundred dollars if I may.
Sixty-five hundred, okay. Commissioner Coyle, do you have a motion that you wanna?
It's just so small in the grand scheme of things, I can't believe you've done, I moved to, uh, adjust the line. Um, as Jude identified to sixty-five, increase the budget line sixty-five hundred dollars.
Any discussion? Uh, if not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
I vote yes, all right. So we are on to new business, old business, anything additional, does anyone have anything else they wanna comment on? No? Uh, okay, so we're gonna go to public comment, I thought I saw somebody there, but it looks like he's off. So I don't see anyone from the public, so we are gonna go into non-public with a motion from Commissioner Coyle shortly. So I wanna thank all the department heads for coming out today, it was really good to see.
Thanks to be a person.
Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, so I moved to enter into non-public, I turned to ninety-one eight, follow three, section two.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded on the motion.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And so.
All right, so we're gonna go into non-public, what do we have?
I have a non-public personnel.
Okay, so I'm gonna try this, so we're, we're coming out of non-public now, um, and so I will make a motion. How many, uh, I'm trying to remember how many bullets, we had three different, um, items. And I will make a motion that we, um, seal the minutes of all three. Because it would likely affect the reputations of. That's people that may be affected. So.
I'll second that.
Seconded to seal those minutes, uh, and on the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Data.
And I, I approve as well.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn and I second that, so we are adjourned, thank you everybody. There we go, sorry to interrupt you guys.